I'd like to call the Village Board to order for Tuesday, April 26th. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Yo.
Trustee Kubaki.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yep.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
And Trustee Krieger will be late.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, is all that there is.
And please remember, men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. I need action on the open and closed minutes from March 22, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number six. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. You must state your name and address. You are limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody out in the audience who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda? Anybody who'd like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we're moving on. Written communications or announcements. I have one. A lot of people are not aware that last, yesterday, at about 11 o'clock, we had a water main break in our main line, one of our main lines coming from Green Bay. And I would like to compliment Doug Martin, our Public Works Director, and the utility crew members of L. Farver, Nick Neville, Corey Porachov, Phil Diamond, Mitch Gothier, Paul Gurke, and Kurt DeKaiser and all of his crew, because they literally worked through the night. They thought that they had it fixed, and it broke again. So, yeah. So, thanks, special thanks to everybody. We've never lost pressure. We never lost water. So, that's a really good thing. So, thanks to all these people. And Steve Burr is here tonight, and he probably had a little bit to do with some of that, too. Thank you to everybody who worked on that, because it, you never realize what goes on when you don't know when that happens. So. Any other written communications or announcements? Okay. I need an action on the consent agenda. We have a change of agent for Chris Oil Company, DBA Chris Food Mart. Number 87 Jennifer Leyva Quinones. Sorry if I butchered that. Sorry. Action on the change of agent, PMI Entertainment Group, DBA Brown County Veterans Memorial Complex, David Herrera. C, approve the full list of bartender's license. D, the budgeted expenditures. E, the investment report. And F, the department report. I need a motion to approve, or if somebody would like to pull an item from that list.
I motion to approve and ask if we could pull the department reports, F.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve with pulling F.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve with pulling the department reports, F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Tracy for F.
I just had a question, and may Steve could answer this. On the new water liquids handling facility plan, there was information in the Public Works Plan about that. I was just wondering when they're going to be coming to present to the Village Board? Have they started doing that yet?
The plan was they were going to come this month, but Doug said that they had their plan to come in May to Eshwabonan. Yep.
Okay. Do you know if they've done, and may this is way early in the process, what an impact that will be on our sewer bills yet? Have they even started to go into that yet?
Yeah, I don't think they've figured that out yet, but they'll be in the process. I think in May, the bill will present some figures for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the department reports, then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve F, the department reports. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine, public hearings. A, public hearing on ordinance number 04-1-22 regarding a request to rezone 1091 West Main Avenue, parcel VA-L-331-1-1, from R1 One Family Residence to B1 Local Business. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody here who would, okay. Could you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the record?
I believe most of the people on Arts Lane.
Could you state your name and address, please, just for the record?
Dan Casper, 3534 Arts Lane.
Okay. Okay.
I don't believe anybody on Arts Lane cares if it does get rezoned. The only thing is, we don't want any driveway coming out onto Arts Lane, because Arts Lane is such a narrow road now, and you get more traffic on it. And I think there's going to be a lot of problems, especially up on that corner, because when you're coming out to get onto Main Avenue, you got to be real careful. Them telephone poles there, you can't see any traffic coming. And if it would make sure that the driveway for that property would come out on Main Avenue.
Okay.
And also, if it gets rezoned and the people that are building there make sure that they put their driveway out on Main Avenue, and any future people, if somebody else would buy the property, it would always be out on Main Avenue.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak for or against this? Aaron, would you like to say anything?
Sure, I can address that concern. And the preliminary site plan that they brought forward does show the driveway coming in off of West Main Avenue with no access onto Arts Lane for the driveway for the property.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to, can, I need you to come up, though, and state your name and address for the record, please.
John Trezka. 1560 Silver Maple Drive, DePere, Wisconsin. We bought the, we own the property. And I was just going to say, reiterate what Aaron said, the site plan, this is Jamie Blum.
Hi.
Builder. Yeah, the plan is to have the driveway on Main Avenue, where the existing driveway was.
Correct. There's an existing curb cut already there on Main Avenue.
Could I have you talk into the mic?
Yeah, if you could have him sit.
Hi, Jamie Blum. There's an existing curb cut on Main Avenue already. We could utilize that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing is closed. 9B, public hearing regarding ordinance number 04-2-22, amending the Bay Park Square PUD for Hy-Vee signage at 2395 South Oneida Street, parcel VA-132-1-4. Is there anybody here? Aaron, would you like to say about this public hearing?
Sure, I can give you a quick intro into the development proposal. I can show it up on screen. The request by Hy-Vee is for revised signage that, of course, would not meet the current PUD for the Bay Park Square Mall area. The PUD covers the entire mall area from Cormier, I'm sorry, from Willard to Pilgrim, Oneida, and Holmgren. When the PUD was initially put forward, of course, it did not envision a grocery store with multiple uses as one of its users in the mall. It anticipated more of the typical department store signage, backlit, similar to what you see with Kohl's or Yonkers previously. We did amend the PUD for the Steinhoffels signage, because again, it's a different use that was not anticipated at the time. Hy-Vee has proposed a signage plan as depicted in your packet. The Site Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission have both recommended approval, and Simon Properties, as required under the PUD, has also approved the signage plan by Hy-Vee.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? Or anybody who would like to speak for or against this?
If I could, or am I able, are you hearing me at all?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Is this coming in clear enough or not? I'm sorry.
It is. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Phil Garland. I'm at 7405 Beckett Drive, Northeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and I'm the president of NESP Rsign, who's representing Hy-Vee tonight. I'm just basically here if you have any questions in regards to any type of construction or that sort of thing. But in general, we think we have a plan here that's in good taste. Hy-Vee has a very nice-looking store. This is one of their new prototypes. We have just a couple of these done, and they're absolutely gorgeous. So hopefully, you know, we'd ask your approval, and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak for or against this project? Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Public hearing is closed. Number 10, action items. 10A, action on ordinance number 04-1-22 regarding a request to rezone 1091 West Main Avenue, parcel VA-L-331-1-1, from R1 One Family Residence to B1 Local Business. Aaron.
Okay. As discussed during the public hearing, you can see on the map, here is Arts Lane, here is West Main Avenue. Here you can see the existing driveway access off of West Main Avenue. The site plan that was submitted, that will come before the Site Plan Review Committee in the future, does indicate a access off of West Main Avenue only, with no driveway access off of Arts Lane. You can see the surrounding zoning in the area. This is a proposed rezoning to B1, which is the most restrictive commercial zoning district the village has for purposes of a financial planning office. If you have any questions regarding the requested rezone, I'm happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, this went through Site Plan and Plan Board, correct?
Yes, it did. It went through Plan Commission. Site Plan will review the site plan when that comes forward.
Just a question for you, Aaron. What type of business is going to be going in there? Do we know what sort of intensity?
It'll be a office use, financial planner, planning services.
Okay. The only thing I have is, it's on the crest of that hill there, and that traffic coming over the hill from the west to the east, sometimes is moving at an interesting rate of speed, and you don't have much time to react. Residential, if you're talking about an office like this, I have less concerns, because I think the traffic will be more incremental than high intensity. So, just a comment. I have no other problems with that other than that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Aaron, could you let me know what other kind of businesses would fit into the same zoning that we're rezoning to? Just to get an idea, if this goes out, what else could come in there?
Sure. It's, I mentioned our most restrictive commercial zoning district. So, what you see actually on Ridge Road, for instance, just south of Kroll's, kind of that area, we have those types of uses. So your small retail, small service-type businesses, really nothing that would generate a whole lot of traffic at any one time.
Yeah. The other question I have is, I know this is just for the rezone, but when it goes to Site Plan Review, can we attach to the rezone that the driveway has to come off of West Main, or that there has to be a fence on the south property line to buffer those residents at all? Or is that something that we could just recommend in a different motion to Site Plan from Village Board if we chose to do that?
What I can certainly do is include that in the Site Plan Review, recommended conditions of approval. And Site Plan can certainly attach those conditions to the approved Site Plan. I believe the applicant actually is proposing a fence already along the south property line.
Yeah, it looked like it on the plan, but...
Right. But we could certainly include the no access to Arts Lane as a condition of approval for the Site Plan.
You know, this is all brought to the Planning Board. We went through all this. We didn't have a problem with that. The gentleman that called, Mr. Casper, he had called me about it, and I came to see Aaron about the driveway. As you know, it is going out to Main Street, so we didn't see any problem with it at Plan Board, so I'll move to approve as presented, to change the ordinance to, from R1 to B1.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 04-1-22, rezoning from R1 to B1. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10B, action regarding ordinance 04-2-22, amending the Bay Park Square PUD for Hy-Vee signage at 2395 South Oneida Street, parcel VA-132-1-4. Aaron.
Okay. As discussed during the public hearing, the proposed PUD amendment is for the new Hy-Vee location at the Bay Park Square Mall. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, as discussed during the public hearing, Mr. Phil Garland, representing the applicant, is also available.
Aaron, I was just wondering, in the site plan itself, it has a red square where Chick-fil-A, I believe, is. Are they left out of this? Because they weren't listed either in the resolution that they were part of the properties?
So, no, Chick-fil-A is included. However, that is actually part of the Bay Park Square Mall property. So they actually have a ground lease with Bay Park Square.
Okay, so they're covered because of, they're part of that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, this was brought through the Plan Board, as you all know. With this type of business, their signage is important. If you look at a lot of grocery stores, they have additional signage. Two, the identities that they've got within the building, liquor store, Hy-Vee has got quite a few, as you all know. I think the signage that they're proposing will fit the property quite well. It's a big enough property that I don't think it's going to be overwhelming by any way but, or any means. But we need good signage in there for directional, just like Chick-fil-A. Look what they're doing there. Seems to be moving pretty good, don't it, Chief? Anyway.
Sometimes.
That's a different subject. Anyway, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the signed ordinance on 2395 South Oneida Street.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 04-2-22 for the signage at 2395 South Oneida Street, the Hy-Vee store. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10C, action regarding resubmitted site plan review for proposed senior housing and town home development at 681 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA-56-4-1. Aaron.
Okay, this is the resubmitted Berkshire Eshwabonan Senior Housing, Workforce Housing Project on Mike McCarthy Way and Borvan. As you can see on the screen, the overall design of the site plan really has not changed from what was approved a little over a year and a half ago or so by the Village Board. The one item I just want to point out, there was a recommended condition of approval to include covered parking. As you can see, that was added to the site plan right here. In terms of the remaining recommended conditions of approval from the original site plan, the applicant did include responses to how they are addressing all those conditions of approval through their development. Therefore, staff has no additional recommended conditions of approval. The applicant, Mr. Sigström Manis, and David Donian are in the audience. If any questions for them, otherwise, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Does anybody have questions? This, this basically is just coming through because it expired.
That's correct.
So, it's the same site plan, very much.
Okay, yeah, it had no problems with site plan. There are improvements, like I believe Mary said that, or Aaron said, that the parking is covered for the parking area that's going to have a canopy over it. Nothing has changed significantly. Well, it's the same. There's no changes other than the parking facility. So, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve it as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resubmitted site plan for 681 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA-56-4-1. Any other comments?
I just have one quick question. I just want to make sure that the development agreement and then the sale of the property, those are both contingent yet, so those are things we're working on with them. This is just approving, basically, the site plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so it's contingent on the development agreement.
And the sale of the property.
And the sale of the property. Okay. Everybody understands?
Yeah, just for clarification. So the site plan is a separate approval. So site plan would, if, with this motion, would be approved. It's not conditioned on the other elements. However, we recognize that two other things need to occur prior to the development taking place. One, the offer to purchase agreement has to be executed, and closure on the property must occur, and then the development agreement would need to be signed. But the site plan would be approved as it is, as that's required under the code.
Thank you.
Okay.
Joel, the, how do I want to say this? The project, not coming to my mouth, the project that you had to apply for.
Sure, the grant program.
That's been approved.
So the grant, the grant award, don't...
But hasn't been issued?
Correct. The grant awards were identified. However, we are still waiting the actual grant contract from the state. Now, the most recent update is that the state is going through and confirming contact information from all the grantees. That contact information is technically due tomorrow, I think, at 4:00 p.m. At that point, I'm assuming that the state will be starting to issue those contracts. They're just in the compilation phase of contact information.
Okay. So the comment I made about June digging could happen?
I think, yeah, I think we're trying to get things in place so that everything, if it's agreeable to the board, the developer, all items will be in place by the end of May, and we could look to close sometime around that, that point.
That would look nice.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10D, action on resolution R4-1-22, authorizing the issuance and sale of $1.915 million taxable general obligation promissory note, series 2022B. Great.
Hello. So, we're coming before you in this agenda item and the next one, on a couple bond issues that the village is going through. So, this is really standard par for the course whenever we do an issue and borrow some money. We have two projects. There's a TID 5 project, the Element Phase 3, TIF incentive, and the second borrowing is for a TID 3 Eschwame pedestrian bridge. So, we just went through the standard process. We've done a Moody's rating call. We've done all the standard work that is involved in that. And so Brad Begut from RW Baird is here, and they helped facilitate the whole bond sale, and he can walk through the process and explain what's happened over the last 24, 48 hours as well.
Sure, thank you. So, this morning, we were out in the market selling these notes to investors nationwide. We had very good reception on the notes. The initial interest rates we went out with are higher than these final rates. We had such strong demand, we were able to reduce the rates before they were locked in. So, on the taxable issue that you're considering right now, the rate that's available is 3.8%. And that's going to be fixed at this point with adoption of the award resolution? And I would point out that the final borrowing amount is slightly higher than what was posted on your agenda. It's $1,960. It was just finalized today. That's why, with the agenda being posted last week, that's why the difference. The difference is caused by, we're including capitalized interest in this note issuance. That's simply including the first several interest payments as a component of the borrowing. And because the interest rate is a little bit higher than it was for what we use for planning purposes, that borrowing amount needs to increase to fully fund that capitalized interest bond. Be glad to go into additional details on that taxable issue or answer any questions?
Just so you're aware, through the, through the process of the TIF developer agreement, this developer has, has committed to a valuation, and by that valuation, their tax increment will cover the payments on the bond issue. So, this isn't coming on a general fund dollars. This is through their valuation, and that's also why we capitalize. It gives us an extra year or so to have that valuation kick in and the, and the tax revenue be collected to help pay for these bonds.
Okay. Any questions? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve resolution?
Motion to approve resolution for R4-1-22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution R4-1-22. And it's actually $1.96 million instead of what's on our sheet here. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Action on resolution R4-2-22, authorizing the issuance and sale of $1.75 million general obligation promissory note, series 2022A. Greg and Brad.
Sure. This would be the debt issue for the Eschwame River Trail pedestrian bridge. We've been, well, I haven't, Rex and his group have been working hard on, with planning and engineering and getting that going, so this is going to help pay for that, that bridge, which will commence at some point this year, and that'll be a great addition to that park and to our trail.
It's been a lot of years in the, in the making.
So, on this issue, the final rate that's available, 2.95%. Again, very good reception on these notes this morning, and we were able to reduce that rate after the initial offering. With this issue, the, the borrowing amount is the same as what's posted on your agenda, and that's because there's not capitalized interest included in this. This is a tax-exempt issue. It's going to be funded through those TID, TID number three revenues. The payments will be funded through TID three revenues. It's a relatively short repayment, scheduled for final payment June 1 of 2027, and the cash flows in that TID should be sufficient to cover the annual payments on this debt.
Again, doesn't come out of general obligation, so...
Correct.
That's good.
I'll move to approve resolution R4-2-22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution R4-2-22. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay. 10F, action on reserve Class B beer, Class B liquor license for Gomez Family LLC, DBA V.A.O.C. Chris.
The Gomez Family LLC doing business as the O.C. Sole owner is Gabe Gomez, is requesting approval of a reserve Class B beer, Class B liquor license for 465 Marina Lane. All paperwork and corresponding fee has been filed accordingly. I don't see Mr. Gomez in attendance. He had planned on being here, and this did pass unanimously at the Public Works and Protection Committee.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
This went through Public Works. Everything was clear at that time. We got to hurry this thing up, because Kelly's getting thirsty, and it's right next door to her place. So I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reserve Class B beer, Class B liquor for Gomez Family LLC. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10G, action on Class B beer, Class C wine license for Max Fox Cities LLC, DBA Max, Green Bay. Chris.
Max Fox Cities LLC doing business as Max, Green Bay, is requesting approval of Class A beer, Class C wine license at 2654 South Oneida Street. All paperwork and corresponding fee has been filed. There is a representative in attendance if you have any questions, and this also passed unanimously at Public Works.
unanimously at Public Works and Protection Committee.
Has this site had a liquor license in the past or any kind of sales in the past, or is this a new?
This is new.
This is new?
Okay. Any thoughts or discussion? Motion?
It went through the plan board. We had no problem with it. I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class B beer, Class C wine for Max Fox Cities LLC. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. 10H, action of 2022 wage increase proposal for aquatic positions. Rex and Melody.
So the proposal that you have in front of you is an increase that we are requesting for the current 2022 summer season. As many of you have probably heard on the news or read about, we are experiencing a pretty severe lifeguard shortage in our area. And in combat of that, local municipalities have began increasing their wages and offering bonuses and things like that. And in turn, that has now put the village at the bottom of the pay scale for lifeguard wages for this coming summer.
A lot of these increases have taken place after the budget process that happened this past fall. They're making these decisions in '22. Otherwise, this would have been brought through the finance process back in last September or October.
So with that coming up, my staff, seeing these things coming through late January, early February, began bringing questions to me about what's going on and these lifeguard wages, which then in turn makes me worried for our staff for Eshwabemi Lake and the pool this summer. Our staff enjoy working for Eshwabanon and at the lake. They don't want to leave, but unfortunately, while kids are saving for college or this is their summer job and driving down a night of street and you see $15 an hour at Panda Express, those things do weigh on that age group. So I told them that I would do a poll of local municipalities and see where we are at, and we are at the bottom. So this job requires a specific set of skills. Not every seasonal applicant possesses these skills and abilities to do the lifeguarding jobs. So I am looking for, the original request was a $2.50 increase across the board for lifeguard wages. When I did bring this to Finance and Personnel, they also put a motion in to increase the supervisor and head lifeguard wages $3 instead of the $2.50. This, I think, is important because working at Eshwabemi is very different than working at a local pool. They are trained differently. They're required to have more training and different certifications for that. And the current staff that I have, while we were closed in 2020, when we reopened in 2021, I had 17 of my 22 staff as brand new that summer. So coming into 2022 now, I would like to keep that staff that I've trained all last year. And those are the guards, those are the veteran guards, those are the ones that teach the new ones coming in how it goes. So if you have any questions?
You've done a real good job laying this out. It's very straightforward and to the point, and that's what we're experiencing in the labor market in this nation at this point in time. So based upon what you provided, it's very well laid out. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that. I second everything you said, Steve. I know they do a good job at that. If you follow the news, you're finding out everybody's got really problems with keeping pools open because of short staff. So I think the Park and Rec people did a great job in keeping everything open through, well, the, I always use the word the swimming pool, but it's really the lake they had to keep shut down for the pandemic, but everything else went, so not a problem.
I just want to make sure that we are also going to include the $150 bonus. Is that part of this motion? Is everyone comfortable with that? So part of what came from the Park, or no, Finance and Personnel was if someone reaches 250 hours between the May 24th and Labor Day, they'd get a $150 bonus. So was that included in your motion, Steve? And Gary, would you second that?
It was as laid out, so I would assume.
As presented, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the wage increase for the aquatic positions as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, that's a, you know, my daughter was a lifeguard. She worked for Jeremy when she was in high school. That's a pretty important job, a lot of responsibility, so. Okay. 10I, 2021 general fund financial report. Greg Wenhols.
So just want to touch briefly on how we ended the year, 2021. If you recall, taking a step back, 2020 was quite a challenging year, and as we were going through the 2021 budgeting process, we were a little bit unsure on a lot of different revenues and expenditures and how things would bounce back, et cetera. We ended up budgeting a $325,000 decrease to fund balance, and part of that was because we had, in our debt service fund, there was a big drop off from 2021 to 2022 of $300,000. We were able to absorb that. Our fund balance is very high, so we, that's how we ended up budgeting it. Well, everything that happened this year, we had a lot of kind of unusual puts and takes through the year. We had kind of our normal ups and downs with supplies and contracted services and repairs and those types of things. But we had, and I've noted them in the green sheet, all the different items that contributed. But at the end of the day, we ended up with a budget surplus of $426,141. So in essence, that's including the loss, right? So eliminate the loss, it's really $101,141 plus. So that's, so to the budget, it's a $426,000 improvement. Some of the variances that we had in the year, from a revenue perspective, room tax was $104,000 more. That's a great thing for the community as a whole. We saw it kind of countywide. Again, didn't really know where that was going to end up coming in. We had some pluses in intergovernmental aids. Permits were up $72,000 more than budget. We had a lot of development continuing and staying strong. And rescue squad services were up almost $100,000, I think partly due to some rate increases, but just, that's just volume. We also received recycling revenue that we hadn't been getting in a while. We weren't sure how that was going to play out exactly. It's a weird variable that comes and goes quickly. So that was $50,000. And then you'll notice in here, we had insurance settlement. So we received settlement dollars of $300,000, but in turn, we had $300,000 in expenses that offset that. So where insurance company provided the relief for those settlement costs to us. Some of our negative variances, fines and forfeitures were down. Our investment income was way down due to the market just continuing to be not great, if you will. And cable TV franchise revenue is down $44,000. So when I look at that, you know, overall, there's not a lot that, the only really one that concerns me a little bit is cable TV franchise revenue. I could see that continuing to drop as people have alternative means of watching television. But a lot of these other ones, I think they were up, like rescue squad services. I think we're fair to increase our budget a little bit with those types of items. From the expenditure side, we always have attrition. We budget 100% capacity on the year. That's just, there's different budget methodologies to that. So we had a lot of turnover, and there's that attrition where you've got that gap in rehiring, if you will. So there's a lot of dollars there. The really big thing that we had, and it's a, it's a positive to expenditures, we received a really large refund from Green Bay Transit. Typically, we get an annual refund from them. They'll do an audit, and usually by about June of the following year, they issue a refund check, $25,000, $50,000, somewhere in there, for prior year services that, because they bill us a standard rate every month, and then they'll review the year, and they true up all their customers. Well, this year, there was different aid with COVID aids that they received and also some of our route changes that we had in place, that took place. We had a really large refund from them, which was $263,000. So it was a very large refund. And then we've had some other negative variances. I mentioned the litigation settlement. We had repairs, vehicle repairs were $61,000 more than planned. I think we're addressing that with some of our new equipment. And part of that was a delay in getting new equipment. So we know we needed new equipment, and then it's been, it's been a struggle to get these bigger, more expensive repaired vehicles in our inventory. So overall, it netted out to be a positive for us, and that's really how the year ended. So if you have any questions, any concerns?
Just one question on my part. Fines and forfeitures down $171,000? Anything there, Chief, or Greg?
I almost anticipated this question as I was going through this. I think the easy answer would be to say that maybe the officers aren't writing as many citations. I don't know if that's necessarily the case and how things are going out in the community, what our officers involved or the type of calls they're involved in. So I'd have to break it down to give you a better answer as exactly why it's down that far. And I'm really, I wasn't really, I anticipated that I was going through that, but I didn't prepare before this meeting for that question. So if you'd like me to answer that, I can do that at a different time.
Oh, that's fine. And on the flip side, your rescue squad services were up significantly, so maybe that's a shift in more of the ambulance run?
Well, we are busier on the EMS side, and we did increase the rates this year, so that is a positive impact. I can tell from looking at our calls for service from last year and this year, those are obviously up, and some of our calls for service on the police side are down a little bit. But again, it's, you know, those fines and forfeitures, it all depends on what the officers are involved in, the type of calls, everything that's happening out there in the community. So again, that would be a more in-depth answer as to figure out exactly why they're down as much as they are.
Yeah, an answer in the future is fine. That's fine.
Any other questions? Okay. This was information only. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. 10J, action on transfer of excess 2021 general fund dollars. Greg?
So to continue on the discussion, so what do we do with those dollars? Some of you are aware of this, some maybe not so much as you're newer. The village has traditionally taken surpluses at the end of a year and reassigned them for another purpose, and there's a few reasons for that. Yeah, it looks great when you have a surplus, but then if you, even if you keep it in the general fund and you designate it or restrict it, and you have a balanced budget in the next year, and then you go and turn around, we spend this $400,000, it's going to look like a loss the next year. And rating agencies look at all that information, and sometimes they fully understand it, and quite honestly, sometimes they don't. And they view it as, okay, you're not properly budgeting, you're overspending, even though we'll tell them, well, we had it reserved, it's still a blip on those rating reports for anyone to read, and if they don't really read the fine print, it could be something missed. So what we like to do is put it off into another fund. We've traditionally used Employee Retirement Fund. We've used Village Building Fund for larger capital projects like our roof, kind of more large one-time projects, parking lots, things like that. And the Employee Retirement Fund is, we have a constant liability, if you will, of retiring employees who've accumulated accrued time off, sick time balances, that they are entitled to be paid out when they retire. And those can add up quickly. And so we've traditionally used these types of funds to pay off or build up a fund to help pay those, make those payments. So what we're recommending in this year is to follow suit, to put the full amount into the Employee Retirement Fund. It has, the last year was a big draw, this past year, and we anticipate especially the next two years to have a larger than normal number of potential retirements. We don't always fully know, but we can kind of, through the grapevine, you look at, you know, where people are in their careers and where they're close to retirement dates and things like that. Position ourselves well that even if it doesn't happen this year, next year, certainly within three, four years, then we have the funds available. Otherwise, we have to address it during the budget time. So it's worked very well for us. The one thing you should note that when you make this motion to move money into another fund, you can always, as a board, go back in a year or two years and say, hey, wait a second, we put all that money in there, how are we doing? We want to take some of that out and reallocate it for another purpose. The board always has the ability to do that. So once you make a decision today, it isn't locked and guaranteed forever. There's always that flexibility to move it. I think, quite honestly, we're positioned very, very well with the ARPA funds that we have to tackle a lot of projects that are out there right now. And so from a budget perspective, it just makes sense. And so the recommendation is to put all of the excess funds into the Village Employee Retirement Fund.
Any questions for Greg about that?
Well, as Greg said, we've done that in the past, put that money into the retirement fund. And like you said, we can always pull it out if we need something for the other pocket. So I don't have a problem with that.
No, we discussed this at Finance and Personnel, and, you know, after Greg kind of went through it with us, we voted to go ahead with this. But one of the things that came up at our committee was the cost to retain employees and also get employees on board, and something that we wanted to maybe come back to Finance and Personnel and talk about that a little bit further, how we can retain our employees and how we can attract employees to us. So just as kind of an offshoot of this, not to use this funding, but to keep that in mind in the future as we go forward, that we're going to have some costs, additional costs for our budget when we bring in new employees potentially, and to keep our existing employees when we bring in new for maybe a higher wage than some of our existing employees. So that was some of the discussion that came at Finance and Personnel as well.
I'd make a motion to approve the transfer of all 2021 general fund access funds to the Employee Retirement Fund as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer all of the $426,141 to the Employee Retirement Fund. Any other discussion?
Under discussion. I just have kind of an odd question. I agree with this moving here, but if we look at our next agenda item, the Batumis paving contract, that came over 25% higher than what we anticipated. My fear is if we don't do the roads that our Public Works Department has decided to go ahead with and we're cutting a bunch out, would it make sense to use some of this money to be able to do all the roads that were anticipated this year and put the Batumis down? So that's just a question I have with having that much money putting in retirement, if it would make any sense to look at that.
I can attempt to answer that a little bit, and then Greg can kind of pipe in too. I think it can be somewhat of a shell game, if you will. So you're right, absolutely, the paving contract came in much higher than we anticipated based on our budget numbers, just given the fact of the inflationary costs, fuel costs, things of that nature. When the preliminary audit was done and these numbers were presented to us, our paving contract was still out to bid, and so it wasn't until after the preliminary numbers, in fact, after Finance and Personnel, that these numbers became available. And so it became kind of a challenge from that perspective. I think there's a couple of factors that we can take into consideration as it relates to this. Again, somewhat of a shell game. We can place this money certainly into the Employee Retirement Fund. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's fully committed in perpetuity for that purpose. We can pull it out based on the priorities of the board moving forward. We can certainly segregate some of the funds to put towards this year's paving list to accomplish all roads as planned in the budget. We certainly can do that. The other opportunity that we may have with our paving contract is to utilize our ARPA funds that we haven't yet allocated. So we have allocated about half of our ARPA funds for a variety of different projects for this fiscal period. We have another half for next fiscal period that we can account for. And the reason why I suggest that is that the ARPA funds can be used for things like our paving list, but they cannot be used for employee retirement or benefit plans. So if you more or less take the fund balance that is available, put it into the Employee Retirement Fund. retirement fund, you can fund the retirements going forward for the next foreseeable one to two, maybe three years. And that if we utilize ARPA funds, that could assist us in this paving list. And I'm sure Steve is is going to talk when this agenda item comes up, is that some of these projects moving forward, we may have the availability to use tax incremental financing funding for because some of these projects may be located in existing TIF districts to help support some of those projects as well.
Thank you. Any more discussion with the motion and the second?
Just another thought on that, too. We might want to bump up that budget on an annual basis over and above the 675 and add 100,000 a year for the next three or four years to get to a new number. That number was was good for a number of years, but based upon what we're seeing out there, maybe 100,000 a year for the next three years might might be something to consider during the budget process.
Not not to cheat the system for the next agenda item, but I think we were allocating 25 or 50,000 in addition to what we had, and that certainly isn't keeping up with a 25 to 30% rate of inflation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to transfer the excess dollars. More discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10K, review and action regarding the award of the 2022 Batumis plaining and paving contract. Steve Burke?
Yeah, just to give a little background, you know, we had the discussion a little bit already, but little background here, every two years, we rate the roads. It's called the Paser Rating, where we go out, drive all the roads. There's a ranking scale from one to 10, 10 being brand new, basically one being a gravel, you know, a paved road turned into gravel. So what we try to do, and we put a five-year paving list together, it's available on the village website, and that's based on a budget number. And we try to accomplish maybe four to five miles of road per year, you know, based on a budget number that we we think we'll have, you know, going forward. And we try to hit the roads that are listed as fours or fives, there's quite a few of them. The last couple of years, I think everybody's noticed, we've gotten those freeze, thaw, winters, a lot of precipitation, takes its toll on the road, especially, you know, the asphalt, obviously. And so our roads are definitely getting beat up more than they have in in past years. So this, you know, we had a five-year paving list put together, you know, going into the spring, once the thaw went out. We looked at the road lists that we were gonna, you know, put put together for for this year and some of the roads we had to shuffle around. You know, Babcock Road that's on the list now before you, you know, that road wasn't, it's probably only, I think we paved it 10 years ago. You know, typically roads last 20 years, but Babcock Road is highly used. So some of the highly more more used roads definitely get get beat up, you know, more often than you got the freeze, thaw cycles going on, just takes a toll on them. So we put the list together based on what we were seeing, what our list was from past years and put that out for bid. So the list that's included in your green sheet, we had, you know, the two, two contractors, two local contractors are qualified, Northeast Asphalt, MCC, both submitted their, both submitted their bids. The low bid for the list that we had included was Northeast Asphalt for 980,136, and which exceeds our budget, and we just, you know, talked about that a little while ago. In the past, that type of thing has happened where we've had to tweak maybe some of the roads. We've already talked with the contractor, you know, Northeast Asphalt, they're willing to work with the village in trimming, you know, that list, you know, they're they're okay with with doing that. So it's up for discussion, I guess, if we want to, you know, talk about staying with the original list or, you know, approving, you know, their number, but then having staff trim, trim the list down as presented to meet budget. So I guess, I guess that's up for discussion. If you guys, anybody have questions or want to discuss further?
Is the need to award now to give them time to plan and and put it in into a timing perspective for us this summer, so we get into the schedule?
Yeah, the the schedule is pretty tight. You know, we got the, with the bicentennial coming up, we actually put that in our, in our contract for completion, you know, by early August. So that, you know, they're, they don't have an issue meeting that, but we like to award it so they can get going. You know, the concrete work's got to get done first before the asphalt can get done. But so timing is definitely of the essence.
What I'd like you to, what I'd like to see you do is to, you know, is to award the contract, work with the contractor to try and maximize the impact as you laid out and also come back to us if you feel that we should use those ARP funds to supplement and we can augment that at a later point in time. If that's, is that okay with you, Joel? Yeah, okay.
Was that a motion?
It can be, yeah.
Does anybody want to second that and then we can have more discussion if needed?
I I don't have a problem with what Steve's saying.
Did you want to second it before?
Yeah, I'll second it. I, you know, we only budgeted 675,000 and they want 980. You know, is there some way we can get to that 980 and do all the projects that you have listed? You know, I I feel good about Schwab and on in their roads. I think we do a good job. I just don't want to see us get behind, is my reasoning to say this. I wish you would remember wards three and four a little more than where you're going with this. I haven't seen anything, nothing in that area in the last several years, other than, I believe it was Argon, you did do me a favor and get the people off my back on that street. But, you know, I'd like to see us do what we can to continue the amount of roads that you've got this year, if that's at all possible.
Well, just to your point, Gary, that's a good point as far as our list. You know, we try to group the roads together based on their rating. And if there's some are residential, some are commercial, you know, we've done, like the industrial park last year, we did quite a few out there. And we, there was actually a couple of roads that we were going to trim that there's some development going on, like, you know, Industry Court, the Ashland Access Road up by, you know, Broadway Chevrolet. If we would, you know, flip-flop some of those, then we wouldn't be doing any residential, right? So it's like, so we're trying to do some of each if we can. But there, I think, to be honest with you, we are falling behind. You know, just so everybody knows, there, there, you know, to catch up, that we're, you know, based on numbers, you know, you can't do it all in one, one year, but we're talking in excess of a million dollars each year for a couple of years to catch, to catch up. But that's, I think people got used to, our roads are good, you know, comparative, right?
Definitely.
But we are, you know, we've set the bar pretty high and we're starting to drop below that. You know, just but based on, just based on the weather conditions, really what it comes down to, roads are just getting beat up more than they have in the past.
And Gary, all I'm, all I'm saying is basically award the bid with the dollars there and try and maximize that and then to come back with ARP dollars at a later point in time. I don't want us to fall behind either, Gary. You know, I, we worked very hard to get our roads to the level that they are at.
Right.
I think if we budget a little bit more every year for the next number of years, we could, realistically speaking, we're probably going to have to be at that million dollar level in, in short order.
What bothers me is the cost of it, period, as the cost goes up. That doesn't mean we're doing more roads or just paying more for it.
Absolutely.
And that's the issue that I'm getting at.
I think if it's agreeable to the board with with the motion, I think the intent from staff tonight was to get an approval to award the contract so we can be placed on the schedule. We're going to attempt to match the projects that align with our budget and then based on the the difference between our budget and the full contract award, then we can come back to the board and prioritize some of those other projects and potentially identify other funding sources to support those other projects to match that, that dollar amount. There's a lot of factors, obviously, that go into that. We want to make sure we prioritize those projects appropriately with the board as part of the discussion process. With that being said, certainly we're seeing inflationary pressures across, across every segment of of the market. But with that, there is a high degree of volatility as well and uncertainty, especially in this type of market environment. We have high fuel costs and then oil costs that are volatile. And so I think there's a lot of concern from the bidding environment for these really kind of two contractors about making money, more or less, in these, in this type of work. So as things maybe begin to settle down, maybe we won't see as much volatility in the market and hopefully next year, this million dollar bid for this volume of work will go back down or stabilize. So I don't know that, it's too, too early to say whether or not this is a trend that will continue over the next several years. We hopefully will see some stabilization or some reduction in that cost because of the high degree of volatility currently in the marketplace. There's a lot of concern from these bidders that they're going to kind of lose their seats, if you will, if they don't bid this appropriately.
I, when I was reading over this, one of the first things that came in my mind as far as roads is, since I've been on the board, the the citizens that have spoken to me about concerns, this ranks up there. It's usually, it's a lot of times it's street questions or issues, neighborhood, you know, streets, things like that. Between this and and public safety, I think, are the top two in the, for my area, anyway, and might run neck and neck. So I'd definitely like to see, you know, cover these and I'd definitely like to see it come back to the board and see if we can't start to get caught up again. The last thing I want to see is get, get behind anymore. It's too hard to catch up. And I know it's a huge expense, but if there's some way we could do it, I'd, I'd like to come back to the board and we can, we can discuss that. I know there's a lot of things going on. You know, and it being, having said that, it's, it's, you know, public safety questions and and street issues, maybe we write more tickets.
Would we put the pressure on someone?
Yeah.
You know.
Well, probably, you know, I don't want to go there with rough roads. I'll keep that one myself.
You know, I just, I spent yesterday and today down in Madison with the Urban Alliance Group and everybody has the same issues, every municipality. The roads, our monies that we get from the state have decreased so significantly in the last 10, 12, 14 years. And they're not going up, but I will say that due to previous staff, boards, whatever, that department heads sitting at that table over there and boards up here, we have, we're in a lot better shape than a lot of them.
A lot better.
So we, we're very fortunate, but I I agree that our, our Batumis plaining contracts are going to get bigger and so we're going to have to add money. But we have been adding the 25,000 a year, which has gotten it up a little bit. It's just that the costs are going up, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand?
Can you go through the motion again one more time, please?
Okay, it is to direct, we will accept the 980,136,000 bid from Northeast Asphalt and the staff will work to trim down the roads and then we'll come back with, to figure out what we're going to do about the rest.
So Steve, my question to you is, so you award the contract, you trim the roads and then comes back to village board next month, let's say, and we add the roads back in. Is that going to be a problem with Northeast Asphalt getting those in and the timeline you mentioned before, or is that something we need to take action on sooner?
We may have to take action sooner, I guess that was going to be one of my questions because as soon as, you know, we get done tonight, I'm going to talk with Northeast tomorrow and they'll, they'll grab the contracts and they'll start working on their bonding and whatnot. Then they turn around and and start scheduling the concrete work. And we still have, there's time, there's still effort that village has to do. We have to, you know, check the, you know, the manholes, check the pipe, you know, sewer pipe, storm sewer, that type of thing. So there's, there's time, but to wait till next, to end of, to May to grant more street approval, that may be a timing issue. So I'm not sure if there's a, we need to have a special board meeting or before.
So then my question is, could we approve this evening through ARP, ARP funds to cover the balance? Would we want to do that or do we want to do, or can we do that?
How much are the ARP funds and how much of the second portion have we committed?
We have not received the second installment. We received the first installment last year, went through the budgeting process. We listed a bunch of projects that would basically use up all those funds. And some of those projects, although we haven't necessarily incurred, or it's broken ground, we've certainly incurred some time and effort in doing those. So the second installment, I'm not quite sure 100% when that one comes in. I think it's sometime this year. So from a cash flow perspective, we may not have it. So and, you know, we haven't had any discussions on that second installment, what we're going to do at all. And obviously that comes to the board.
How much does the second begin installment?
Nine, probably 900,000, yeah, just under that.
I think if you alert Northeast Asphalt, we've been a good customer of theirs. And if you basically indicate that the award has been presented for these dollar amounts and we're working to identify additional funding sources and put them on notice, I don't think that'll cause a problem for them. We've been a good customer of theirs for many years.
I'd agree with that, Steve. Yeah, as far as the award period, I'd have to look back at the contract, but typically it's 15 days. It's been a pretty quick turnaround, Joel, I'll have to look at that. Yeah, they, they're really good to work with, you know, both at Northeast Asphalt and MCC. I guess the only risk where they start working on some of the, if they start, you know, they wouldn't be doing the paving yet before May, it'd be more of the curb work. So that's not as expensive. So there, you know, we might have, you know, if they do the curb work and we exceed, we'd have to cut back maybe on, yeah, it's, it's a tough, I don't have an answer for you really, Steve.
And, you know, every other municipality is in the same boat as we are.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is, is with the dollars that are out there, there's going to be less work to do, per se. So that, they should be able to fill in there. I mean, they, they'll be looking for additional work.
Yeah, the other component that we were just kind of chatting at staff table here is that there will be another paving contract that will be let this year to perform some additional paving work throughout the village. In particular, we have a project here on the parking lot to repave and some additional paving. So if we were to scale this project back to coincide with our actual budget, we could tie those additional streets and rebid them as part of that, that next paving contract and do it that way. And then we can address that issue when that, when that bid is let.
Another thought, too, two weeks from tonight is May 10th, which is the second, we could always hopefully have a special village board. That would only be 14 days if need be.
It's pretty quiet in here. Steve, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir.
Gary's good enough. I heard you say they do curb work. I thought the village does the curb work.
Not, the village does curb work, but that's separate from the mill pave. So that you might see the guys, you know, our street crew out doing curb work by the Catch Basins. We, we take care of the storm sewer on the mill pave streets and the associated curb right by the Catch Basin. But then the, the curb being the driveways, that's a subcontractor to the paving contractor.
Oh, okay, all right, I understand.
And this, in this case, this year, it's Martell Construction.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're doing the curb work for Northeast Asphalt.
Okay, all right, now I understand what you meant by curb work.
Yeah, it's typically, it's, it's most of, majority of the curb work is going to be replaced in the curb being by the driveways, you know, just that are all broken up.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody understands the motion?
Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10L, Action and Renewal of the Impound Agreement Between the Village of Ashwabnon and the Wisconsin Humane Society. Joel and Chief.
Just a basic renewal, the, what used to be Brown County Humane Society is now the Wisconsin Humane Society, and we typically have entered into annual service agreements with the Humane Society to provide impounding of stray animals, namely dogs and cats, for us in the event that public safety comes into contact with a stray animal. Our contract expired at the end of this last year, 2021, and they've been continuing that service until we can renew the contract. Now that it has transitioned fully to the Wisconsin Humane Society and part of their funding stabilization, they would like to enter into three-year contracts with the partnering municipalities, and then by doing so, they would add a 3% inflationary escalator to each year. They more or less have kind of a monopoly on the market. There's not a lot of other entities out there that will take our stray animals. Chris Teskey did volunteer to take all the cats, but she would not take the dogs, so...
I said I'd take all of them.
I thought maybe Gary was going to take that.
No, I decided not to store those animals in my garage. I want the Corvette in there.
We have a good working relationship with the Humane Society, and it continues to be a good relationship, so staff is certainly recommending approval of the contract for a three-year term with a 3% annual increase.
They do a valuable work effort for us, and it takes pressure out for public safety officers.
They do, and we have absolutely no place to store these animals, so we're, like Joel said, they kind of have a monopoly on us.
With that, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the impound agreement with the Wisconsin Humane Society. All those in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10M, Action on Proclamation Declaring April 29, 2022 as Arbor Day in the Village of Ashwabnon. Rex, before you go, I have to tell you the information that I get from the Arbor Day Foundation. The Village of Ashwabnon is 150 years old this year, and Arbor Day Foundation is also 150 years old this year, so.
Founded by J. Sterling Morton.
Yeah, in Nebraska.
Out in the Nebraska.
Yeah.
Out in the Draska. So this is the village's, if approved tonight, what the proclamation, the attached proclamation in your packet basically says is it states a little bit about the history of Arbor Day, the importance of trees and the importance of planting trees, and recognizing the Village of Ashwabnon's status as Tree City USA. If a proclamation is approved this evening, then this will be our 29th year of actively promoting and maintaining our urban forest within the village, which I think is appreciated by all, so.
Yep, okay.
Move to approve the Declaration of the Arbor Day in the Village of Ashwabnon.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the proclamation declaring April 29 as Arbor Day in the village. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10N, Action on Resolution Number R-4-3-22, Ashwabnon 2022 Food Truck Rally and Ashwabnon Blast. Rex.
So this is similar to what we've done previous years. This is the sixth year, I believe, of the blast, and this is, this will be entering our fourth year of doing the food truck rallies. This just recognizes that and allows the village the ability to run the beverage tent.
Okay. I'll move to approve the Ashwabnon 2022 Food Truck Rally and Ashwabnon Blast.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R-4-3-22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
10O, Action on Ordinance O4-3-22, Amending Section 2-2-133 Public Works and Protection Committee. Joel.
This is simply a cleanup ordinance to amend that section as referenced in the action item. It was identified as we were going through the appointment schedules for this year that the Public Works and Protection Committee section of our code for creating the committee as well as establishing the membership was incomplete, meaning it did not include who is to serve on that committee, namely two citizen members and then three Village Board members. So this ordinance more or less just establishes what in fact has been the practice for the establishment and membership of that committee.
You mean I've been running an illegal meeting for all? I'll approve this thing, we got to get back on the bench.
We have to get established, exactly.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Ordinance O4-3-22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10P, Action on the Committee Appointments for May 2022 to April 2023. These are the committee appointments that I'm reappointing people. I talked, I called every one of them, and everybody would like to stay on their committees.
Yeah, right.
So I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the committee appointments for May 2022 to April 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number 11, Items for Next Agenda. If anybody has anything?
I just, like, Brian Murphy was there, Officer Murphy was there and talked about the increase in traffic stops and tickets and stuff, and I was wondering if maybe you could do a report or come to Village Board and give us an update on that and maybe look at past years and comparisons, whenever you can get it together. I mean, it doesn't have to be next month, but when you can kind of get it organized.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good thought in conjunction with Trustee Kabaki's question earlier, so we can certainly combing those together and give you a good update on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, number 12, Closed Session Items. During the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabnon may convene into closed session pursuant to a Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E, to consider, discuss, act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the TIF developers' performance agreement with GenCap Dana, Ashwabnon 75 LLC for Tax Parcel VA-56-4-1, where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E, to consider, discuss, act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding collective bargaining negotiations with Ashwabnon Public Safety Association or any public employee where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. C, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren F, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering a Village of Ashwabnon employee's request for leave of absence and financial, medical, social, or personnel, personnel histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where Paren B applies, which if discussed in public referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Paren 2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of this agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session. So moved. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Kabaki?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
Trustee Fluki?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone.